Please rise to the plenary, agents.
The Plenary Agents, to apply to the United States of America and to the Republican Party's Constitution, under God, in physical, religious, and religious trust.
May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Robinson. Ms. Catalini.
Here.
Mr. May.
Here.
Mr. Murray.
Here.
Ms. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr.?
Here.
Ms. Geddes.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here. Introduction of others present. Dr. Andrew Doster, Secret Ted of Schools.
And who goes to business manager?
David Truul, Solicitor to Walker.
Good evening, everyone. If anyone's who's watching this on video, if you hear this roaring background noise, unfortunately, our air conditioning is not working, so we have some fans in the room, so we do our best in using our microphones to make sure that everything can be heard loudly and clearly. We did not have an executive session this evening, so we'll move on to our reports from the IU and the legislative report. Mr.?
Thank you. The Bucks IU met on Tuesday, June 17th, their offices in Old Town. All those attached items were voted on, which is attached to board docs. There are also other attachments that kind of outline the really amazing things that the IU does, were as on a week pass home, and we meet again on Tuesday, July 16th.
Any questions regarding the IU report? Legislative report?
It is almost attached and has some really interesting information regarding the cyber charter school reform that's going through and the some information on the federal budget updates.
Latest I heard regarding the progress that has been passed in the House and is waiting for Senate?
Yes. However, Rebecca Malamet from the IU did mention that there she's heard some romblings that they are going to strip basically all of the language that was passed by the House and replace it with school voucher language.
Thank you. Any questions from legislative report?
No questions, just to add that Governor Shapiro has joined nineteen other states in filing a lawsuit against the federal government regarding the funding that Pennsylvania will be withheld through the upcoming fiscal year.
Thank you. Part of relations committee has not met, so we'll move on to the test school report. Mr. Murray?
Best wishes to three hundred Democrats, twenty seven B.C. to be just the last twenty twenty-five. One of those summer programs, some opportunities are real down since twenty-three, and there's two or three of them, so that's an explore program operating from July fourteenth until July third first. And the culinary arts program, the restaurants on the home screen renovate. They'll have a decent set of four students to be learning. And next week will be Bucks State.
Thank you. Any questions regarding the test school report? All right, I assume ETO has not met, schools ended, as well as MoF, MoF has not been reviewed, sorry? I didn't ask before. Wait, you're doing something. Just a question.
So twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five end of year board summary for MoF was May twenty-first at five thirty. This year, American University successful tracking the MoF's mission to support enhanced educational opportunities for Morrisville students across all the eleven states. The educational program highlights, MoF proudly funded a range of engaging student-centered programs this year, including nature, live animal show, prismatic major laser light show, STEM stars, physics in the real world, young play rights, just to name a few of the shows, educational programs that have helped out. We're looking at, more they decided to expand programming in twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six school year with more between centered around science, music, and math. Our books for keeps program continued this tradition of promoting early literacy and love for reading. Kindergarten students received all the pages you'll go by Dr. Seuss, which also had special book play honoring former MoF board member, Ms. H. I don't want to mess up her name. Mr. H. was moved by this tribute to his late wife, so he generously donated to help fund a future books for keeps selection, so we thank him for that, along with some other books that we handed out to our kindergartens, kindergartners. Student enrichment support, beyond the classroom, MoF provided transportation funding for the seventh grade class trip to Philadelphia Zoo, National Honor Society trip to Hattiesburg. We supported a high school trip for social studies to the Eastern State Penitentiary as well. So we thank you to all of our generous supporters. MoF work is made possible through the ongoing generosity of our community partners and donors, and we extend heartfelt thanks to the likes of Waste Management, Folks in Pay, Teachers' Fundraisers, Alumni Scholarship Program, Latin Music Scholarship, and the Gladys Delmas Foundation. And your continued support always allows MoF to bring meaningful programs to life and expand what's possible for our students. Lastly, I'd like to give a great word appreciation as we close this school year out, and extends my heartfelt appreciation to each one of our board members for their time, energy, and leadership. On the doc, you will see all those. Mr. Kevin Jones is in the building today, so I'd like to personally say thank you for all of your hard work that you did this year and providing an experience for the students that will last on in their memories, so I thank you for that personally. We look forward to another year of opportunity, creativity, and growth next year, so please follow the links that's attached to donate button, and if you have any other questions, all of the emails are attached as well. So thank you, and we'll see you next year.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Thank you for your work, thank you, Mr. Jones, as well. Thank you to the whole committee of certified MoF. They do some great things for our students, and it is much appreciated, I'm sure, by the entire board. Thank you. Any questions regarding the MoF report? The Joint Board and Borough Council meeting will be on April, oh, sorry, August sixth at seven o'clock, so that will be our next meeting during that time. Superintendent Report, Dr. Doster.
Thank you, Mr. President. First and foremost, I want to thank our students, kids, all this past school year for the successes that we experienced over the course of the year. Without them, obviously, we would not be able to do what we do and what we love at the level that we are able to do it. So, you know, my sincerest thanks to our student population and their parents for sending us their best each and every day and allowing us to try and make an impact in their lives. Secondly, I would like to thank the faculty, staff, and the administration for all of our work they put in over the course of the year. Each year that I have been in education, and the last nineteen years in administration has presented very unique challenges. This year is no exception, but the professionalism of which they demonstrate and they conduct themselves with makes the job easier to do and makes it easier to deal with the issues that we face. So much appreciation to them. We had, I think, an excellent ceremony for graduation just a couple weeks ago. Our students did an amazing job of making that ceremony very formal and very respectful to not only them as a graduated class, but their parents and the community as a whole. So it really has been a great end to the year. I couldn't be more appreciative of everything that has been done from our students straight through every adult that's involved in this organization, including the Board of Education here, and I'm looking forward to what next we are hoping. So thank you very much to everybody involved, and I hope everyone has a fantastic summer.
Thank you, Dr. Doster. From the business office, Mrs. Pocce.
Did I what Dr. Doster mentioned? Thank you to everyone for a great school year. Continue to operate on the operations for the business office. I did want to touch back on the budget. Wanted to review it over. We increased our collection rate to ninety-six percent into the budget, making that an increase of seven hundred thirty-one thousand pesos into the real estate tax, adding on to our revenue with a total rate at ninety-six percent with a total amount of fifteen million three twenty-five eight seventy-two we expect from the new estate taxes collections. With that, on page three of the PowerPoint back, we have the local, state, federal, and other revenues, we have a total amount of twenty-six million six oh eight eight hundred eleven thousand for the entire school year budget in revenues. We have out of that salaries are estimated at fifty million three hundred ninety-four thousand four sixty, that's between professional staffs, sports staff, administration, athletics, and others. Although we did include most of the increases with the mass spending negotiations, that is still to be added and may have to be an increase in exact amount. We have departmental expenses accounted for, seven million forty-five thousand two hundred thirty-seven thousand, that includes special education, other districts such as IU transportation, tuition, charges, secondary facilities, technology, business office, and elementary. We have other accounts estimated, sorry, I mentioned charge situations, previous charge situations and this one, the other expense account estimated four million one hundred sixty-nine thousand, out of that charge situation is estimated one million two hundred four thousand in budget. Again, we have technical school in here as well, debt, tighter century, and this is simply another one. We have total expenses estimated, again, to match our revenue at twenty-six million six oh eight eight eleven, and as previously mentioned, this is a very, very tight budget. We are hoping that we would not outweigh our actuals versus our budget to plan, but we will keep a tight track of it throughout the year and hope to stay on track of other expenses. So with this, we are at zero deficit, making that, again, real estate increase of four point eight percent in that we would match our expenses. The next steps would be to, without improving the final budget and output, the next step.
Thank you. Any questions regarding any of the administrative reports? Moving on, let's do the enrollment figures. Brandview at two eleven, intermediate school two oh one, middle school two fourteen, high school two oh three, out of district placement one fifty-seven, with a total amount of nine hundred eighty-six students. All the comments on agenda items only for this evening at this point in time? Is there anyone wishing to speak regarding the public? May I make sure that there's a microphone there? And all that we ask is that you state your name, and you will have three minutes to speak.
Hi, Allison Pillow, West Cleveland Ave. I would like the board to reconsider approving policy eleven point eighteen, using an independent contractor to assist in the business office at a hundred and thirty dollars an hour. This is a significant amount of money, even if we cap it at forty-five thousand dollars. Specifically, I have two questions. Were there three competitive bids obtained, and why are we considering cutting an assistant principal and a librarian while allocating this level of funding to a temporary consultant? We could also use that money to upgrade the accounting system and use something a little bit more user-friendly for us. These are major trade-offs that impact our students and staff. I urge the board to either postpone the decision or provide a detailed explanation of why it is necessary. It's not just a budget issue, it's a values issue. We should be investing in the people who show up and work with the students every day and not outsourcing at a premium rate. Thank you.
I'm sorry, what item was it?
Eleven point eighteen.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? All right, here we go now. We'll get there. All right, moving on to Facilities Committee reports. Mr. May?
Dr. Doster's report. Over. Director, you're up for a second.
Thank you.
And with the latest and greatest facilities update, we have been without air conditioning in major parts of this building for the last several days, but we are expected to have the contractor come out next week. They were supposed to be out today. They were delayed in their workflow, so they will be out next week to repair the air conditioning systems here in the building.
Thank you. Any questions regarding facilities? Moving on to Education, the Education Committee did not meet this month, so no report. We have one action item, nine point two. A motion is in order to approve the graduating class of twenty twenty-five as presented. So moved, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Schmidt. Any discussion? Congratulations to them all. And as Dr. Doster said, they did a fantastic job, and I couldn't agree more. All in favor? Aye. Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries, nine, zero. Human Resources Committee reports. The, basically, the committees, HR committee has not met, but the Negotiations Committee with the Morrisville Educational Support Personnel Association has met. We met on June second and June sixteenth recently. We have a draft of a new contract, which is being prepared, and we will finalize that and ratify that most likely in August when our next meeting is. So congratulations. Thank you both to our representatives who are here this evening, but we will address that in August. Action items, ten point two. Motion is in order to approve and authorize the superintendent to make any necessary hires during the summer, subject to review by the HR committee. Any appointments made will be presented to the board at the August meeting for ratification. So moved, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Geddes. Any discussion? This is a normal procedure that we do each year at this time. All in favor? Aye. Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries, nine, zero. Ten point three. A motion is in order to approve tuition reimbursement for the twenty-five, the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six summer semester as presented. So moved, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Geddes. Any discussion?
Did we get the information that Mr. Schmidt requested last week?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe so. Did you? You didn't?
I can't hear you. Sorry, I couldn't hear you.
The information that Mr. Smith requested, did you get the information? Did you get the information, Mr. Smith? No, you did not. Regarding the, I guess, the classes being, I thought it was, I thought it was good at the meeting. Regarding the classes for the faculty member taking Spanish, calculus, and Greek.
So she is currently a math teacher. Mr. Ordeck does not have the schedule finalized for this current school year in terms of the teaching load, so as soon as he comes back from his vacation, I can get that in email to you. Any type of Spanish or ESL cert in our school district is incredibly beneficial to our student population, so I would have to look at the whether specific certifications are and where Ms. Ordeck has her slated to teach next year, but as of right now, the course, the final course though has not been assigned, and he is on vacation this week. He'll be returning Monday.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries, nine, zero. Ten point four. A motion is in order to approve or ratify the personal matters as presented. So moved, do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Geddes, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries, nine, zero. Moving on to the Finance Reports, Mrs. Geddes.
We met as a committee at the hold during last week's board work session, June eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. We discussed options for balancing the budget, provided direction to our administrators on how to move forward, and as you can see, the administration's attached the final budget there. We're not meeting again until August twentieth, fifteenth. Committee at the hold or the board session? Or work session, whatever. I do want to ask, why do we do a committee report when we are meeting as a committee at the hold?
Same thing.
Because I thought the purpose of it was to inform the other board members what was occurring.
Could be the public too, it's also making it part of the record.
I'm just curious, because it's already reported. Just asking.
I, while it is informing the board, obviously, we've been here, not everybody's here and ever meeting, and second of all, it is for the public, I believe, as well. So I find it of value. Does it take up that much time? I don't believe so.
That's fine.
If other people feel differently, then we can discuss. Any questions regarding the Finance Committee report? Moving on to action items, eleven point three, which is a consent motion for eleven point four through eleven point six. Eleven point four, a motion is in order to approve the investment report. Eleven point five, a motion is in order to approve the treasures report. Eleven point six, a motion is in order to approve payment of bills as presented. General funds, ninety thousand two hundred twenty-seven dollars. ACH, one hundred forty-two thousand two hundred one dollars and ninety-three cents. Athletics, one hundred eighty dollars. Legal, twelve thousand seven hundred eighty-eight dollars and thirty-two cents. So moved on eleven point three, do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Geddes. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries, nine, zero. Eleven point seven. A motion is in order to approve the business manager to perform financial transactions necessary for July and August. These transactions will be presented to the board in August for ratification. So moved, do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Geddes. Any discussion? This, once again, is also a motion that we have at this time of the year. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries, nine, zero. Eleven point eight. Motion is in order to approve and authorize the business manager superintendent or designated to perform budget transfers and financial transactions necessary to close out the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Transactions and budget transfers will be presented to the board at the August meeting for ratification. So moved, do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Geddes. Any discussion? Yes, this is also one that we do at this time of the year each year. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries, nine, two. We have now opened the floor for nominations for treasurer to the board of school directors effective July first, twenty twenty-five. This position will go through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-six. Do we have any nominations? Do I have a nominee, Mr. May? Do I have a second for that?
No.
Second by Ms. Schmidt. Do you accept the nominations, Mr. May? Are there any other nominations for treasurer? Any other nominations? Get to have your name on all the chats. Important part. All right. Motion to close nominations, so moved, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Geddes. Eleven point eleven. A motion is in order to appoint David May as the treasurer to the board of school directors effective July first, twenty twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. I should read, please. So moved, do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Geddes. Any discussion? Thank you, Mr. May. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries, nine, zero. We will now open the floor for nominations for secretary to the board of school directors effective July first, twenty twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-nine. Yes, this is a four-year position unless the position is vacated. Do we have any nominations?
We nominated Sarah Stern.
Yep, okay, so Ms. Stern was nominated by Ms. Schmidt and seconded by Mr. Murray. Are there any other, do you accept the nomination, Ms. Stern? Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Motion to close nominations, so moved, do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Schmidt. Eleven point fourteen. A motion is in order to appoint Sarah Stern as the secretary to the board of school directors effective July first, twenty twenty-five through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-nine. So moved, do I have a seconds?
Second.
Second by Ms. Geddes. Any discussion?
What happens if I don't get reelected in November?
Then the position becomes vacated and we appoint somebody else. You can come back and appoint Ms. Schmidt.
I will.
Any other discussion? Thank you for stopping me. All in favor? Aye. Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries, nine, zero. Okay. Eleven point fifteen. A motion is in order to approve the Bucks County Technical High School twenty twenty-five, twenty-six school year budget as presented. So moved, do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Geddes. Any discussion?
I just want to remind everyone that this is the budget that includes the development of the adult education class that we had discussed. All of the joint board members voted in favor of it, except for the Morrisville representatives. We opposed it based on the exhaust that's being added to the budget.
Are there any plans for facility improvements and/or expansion within this budget?
Just the regular money that they retain every year. So they're in the process right now of rebuilding their restaurant so that it looks more like a restaurant, and they're in the process right now of repaving the parking lot, driveways leaving.
lot, uh, driveways leaving them, using that money that they accumulated from the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand that they're using.
Thank you. Any other discussion, questions regarding the textual question? Yeah, roll call please on this one.
Mr. Brockington?
Yes.
Ms. Catalini?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
No.
Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
No.
Ms. Stern?
Yes.
Ms. Getty?
No.
Mr. Miller?
No, motion carries, I for. Eleven point one six, a motion is in order to approve the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two financial audit as presented. So move, do I have a second? Thank you, Mrs. Schmidt. Any discussion? Looking forward to the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three one?
Yes, I actually spoke with Mr. Carl Hornbluth today, and we have attempted to pay up completion at the office.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries nine zero. Eleven point one seven, a motion is in order to approve the source for nurses agreement for the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six school year as presented. So move, do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Getty? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries nine zero. Eleven point eighteen, a motion is in order to approve the service agreement with Tom Josiah Consulting LLC for the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six school year as presented. So move, do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Getty? Any discussion? Could we possibly enlighten everyone with the goals of Mr. Josiah and why we need his services?
Yes, Tom Josiah is our accountant, he has been the accountant for the school district for over nine years, and he is very empowered in business office operations in the backside of all the accounting pieces, bankier reconciliations, cha- um, just, uh, adjustments, transfers, uh, AFR submission was very close to with our audit team as well in completion of the audit reports. So he's very empowered and we must have him on board.
And at the cost of... Remember the number once again?
Hundred and thirty dollars and a half.
Right, not to exceed, total compensation not to exceed forty-five thousand?
It usually goes under the forty-five thousand amount?
Usually below the forty-five thousand?
Correct, it's usually below the forty-five thousand, that's just in the agreement. However, they think we are using him, um, a lot, especially for the banking and the reconciliation pieces, since we don't have an, um, accounts payable person.
Do we have an accountant on staff?
No.
So this replaces the salary that we would pay to have an accountant on staff?
Uh, no, the salary would be a lot higher than we would carry.
Yep, plus benefits.
Correct.
So it's in lieu of an in-house position?
Any other discussion? I just believe that was the point she was trying to make. I believe that was the point that my colleague was trying to be receiving what he was right there. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries nine two. Eleven point nineteen, a motion is in order to approve the valid day extended school year program contract for student X N as presented. So move, do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Schmidt? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries nine two. Eleven point two zero, a motion is in order to approve the valid day school, valid day extended school year program contract for student X O as presented. So move, do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Schmidt? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries nine zero. Eleven point two one. A motion is in order to approve the valid day extended school year program contract for student X P as presented. So move, do I have a second? Mrs. Schmidt? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries nine zero. Eleven point twenty-two, a motion is in order to approve the excess items request form as presented. So move, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Brockington? Any discussion?
I do.
Yes.
Um, I just wanted to check if you are replacing the filibulars, not just...
Yes, we are maintaining all the filibulars at their current location.
Little checking. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries nine zero. Eleven point two three. A motion is in order to approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six jungle fund budget resolution as presented. So move, do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Getty? Any discussion? Uh, just so that everyone is aware, that, uh, this, again, as was mentioned in the, uh, business managers report, that, uh, this is a final budget for twenty-six million, six-hundred, eight thousand, eight hundred, eleven dollars. Any other discussion? We need a roll call, please.
Mr. Brockington?
Yes.
Ms. Catalini?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Smith? Ms. Stern?
Yes.
Ms. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes, motion carries nine zero. Eleven point two four, a motion is in order to approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six tax rate resolution. And just so that everyone is clear on that one, the board hereby raises and assesses the school tax for the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year commencing July first, twenty twenty-five at the rate of two-hundred-sixty-eight-point-eight-three-eight-nine mils, being twenty-six-point-eight-eight-three-nine, three-eight-nine dollars on each one-hundred dollars of assessed evaluation upon all real estate located within the Morrisville district. Do I, I'm sorry, I moved out, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Getty? Any further discussion? I believe we need another roll call on that one as well, please.
Mr. Brockington?
Yes.
Ms. Catalini?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt?
No.
Mr. Smith? Ms. Stern?
Yes.
Ms. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes, motion carries eight one. Twenty, uh, eleven point two five, a motion is in order to approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six tax installment payment resolution. So move, do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Getty? Any discussion? This allows, uh, folks to pay their, uh, taxes in installments. It's divided over three equal installments. Uh, you do not, you are not eligible for the discount, uh, so these payments would be due on August fifteenth, October seventeenth, and December fifteenth. Any other discussion? Yeah, I'm lost.
Mr. Brockington?
Yes.
Ms. Catalini?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stern?
Yes.
Ms. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes, motion carries nine zero. And eleven point two six, a motion is in order to approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six Homestead-Farmstead exclusion resolution as presented. So move, do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Murray? Mr. Murray, sorry. Uh, this one here is, uh, that the board of school directors of the school district of Borough of Morrisville, uh, the Homestead and Farmstead exclusion real estate tax assessment reductions in the amount of three-hundred-ninety-eight dollars and sixty-one cents are authorized by the school year beginning July first of twenty twenty-five. Any other discussion? All, uh, yeah, it's, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries nine zero. Moving on to policy. Policy committee met on, uh, June tenth, we met virtually via Teams. Uh, we discussed a number of policies that are on the, uh, report there, uh, just basically doing some preliminary, uh, work on them. We will revisit them at our next meeting, along with a number of other policies, uh, within the two hun- I'm sorry, within the nine hundred, as well as some other, uh, administrative regulations, uh, for the two, within the two hundreds. Uh, the next meeting will be Monday, August eleventh, at seven o'clock here in the LGI. So we have no action items for this month. Any questions regarding the committee report? Hearing done. Moving on to thirteen point one. A motion is in order to approve the resolution to approve the superintendent's recommendation and plan for the curtailment, alteration, and reorganization of district's educational program as presented. So move, do I have a second? Thank you, Mrs. Schmidt. Any discussion? We need a roll call vote on this one as well.
Mr. Brockington?
Yes.
Ms. Catalini?
No.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mr. Murray? Ms. Schmidt?
No.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stern?
Yes.
Ms. Getty?
No.
Mr. Miller?
No.
Motion does not carry. Moving on to new business. Fourteen point one, a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with the CAIU number fifteen, which is the Capital Area Intermediate Unit, number fifteen, for products and services provided in the CAIU number fifteen, Title III Consortium, as presented. So move, do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Getty? Any discussion? This is the same group we had to agree with last year, this one here. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries nine zero.
There was one opposed.
I'm sorry?
One opposed. There was one opposed.
Was there?
Sorry, sorry. Never mind, I'll fix it up.
Thank you.
Was there?
I guess I...
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Fourteen point two, a motion is in order to approve the education placement agreement with foundations for the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six school year as presented. So move, do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Getty? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries nine two. Fourteen point three. A motion is in order to ratify and approve the spring semester tuition reimbursement as presented. So move, do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Getty? Any discussion?
I do, I have a question. One of the people on this report receiving tuition reimbursements has an action item for resignation, and I'd like to know how that's being handled.
Yes, that's a... That's a clerical error, so we'll have to go back.
So then should we not be voting on this?
Well, it's going to hold up payment, it's going to hold up the payment, right? No? Can we amend the motion? So... So we have a motion to amend fourteen point three to ratify the clerical error. Is that all we need to do, or do we need to state what the error is?
Uh, I'll say the clerical error. Clerical error with respect to, uh, item, third item within that, is that correct?
That's correct.
So move on that motion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor to amend fourteen point three?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion to amend, carries nine zero. So back to fourteen point three, a motion is in order to ratify and approve the spring semester tuition reimbursement as amended. So move, do I have a second? Thank you, Mrs. Schmidt. By Mrs. Schmidt. Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Oppose? Staying? Motion carries nine zero. Fourteen point four, a motion is in order to approve the resignation of Alexis Riley High School learning support teacher effective August seventeenth, 2025. So moved, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Staying? Motion carries nine zero. Alright, we have no other new business. Still public comment on either agenda items that need discussed or non-agenda items. Seeing we have none. Moving on to announcements. Nice picture there of our graduating class from the, I believe, the Bucks County period or not, the Fulever's. Congratulations again to our students. And just a brief board note, we do not meet in the month of July. We have no scheduled meetings in the month of July. That means that something could come up. Please also keep on track of your email even more regularly than you may do currently. There could be time-sensitive items that need to be addressed. So we ask you to please keep on track, on top of your email, keep track of it. And with that said, I hope everybody has a safe, happy summer. Majority of it, we'll see you in about six weeks or so. Any other announcements from the board? Motion to adjourn, so moved, do I have a second?
Second.
By Mrs. Schmidt, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Staying? Motion carries nine zero, got anyone?